He gonna say just because the mayor. He tell him how soon.
City council meeting for Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty five. Does please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend DeVos, would you please come and lead us in prayer for twenty twenty five?
Father, thank you, Lord. Father, we thank you this morning, today, on New Year.
Yes.
Father God, we still here.
Yes.
And Father God, we ask your God, you said, bless the worms and save it, one or six.
Yes.
And Father God, I know, Father God, that you gonna do that.
Yes.
And Father, you said everything be done decent and orderly.
Yes.
And we pray, Father God, that everything be done decent, orderly, Father.
Yes.
Oh, God, you said step of a good man, order by the Lord.
Yes.
And I thank you, Father God.
Thank you.
I thank you, say, actual, you said, we shall receive.
Yes.
Lord, you said knocking the door, it should be open.
Yes.
Lord, we knocking on your door, Father. We know, Father God, that you the God that hears us.
Yes.
And we are your children.
Yes.
We actual, Lord Jesus, bless the mayor, to Alderman. Father God, bless, Father God, Carl, Father God, in Sturridge Ward. Bless him, Father.
Yes.
Now, Father, I'm asking, Father, look down on the Richardson. Oh, God, Debbie.
Yes.
Look down on the Father God, and Bobby, Father God, I call them. They're like my children, Father.
Yes.
Oh, God, we actual, Father God, lift their head up.
Yes.
Knowing that, Father God, everything gonna be alright.
Yes.
Because you said, Father God, you told the actual, Lord, now, Lord, we actual, Father, that everything be done decent and orderly, Father.
Yes.
And we actual, Father God, bless the ones, out here, Father God, Father God, we actual, Father God, bless the chief.
Yes.
Oh, God, Father God, the beautiful man.
Yes.
And the deputy, Father God. And Father God, we actual, Father God, look down upon, on the farmer. Oh, God, in Jesus' name, and we thank you for not to trouble, Lord, and we love each other.
Yes.
Let that love keep on going, Father. Oh, God, in Jesus' name, I thank you, Father, I praise you, Father.
Yes.
Oh, you done done, oh, you gonna do for us, Lord, help us to leave from here today.
Yes.
George, oh, God, in Jesus' name, and I thank you and I praise you, in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
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 Wow. Way to start off twenty twenty five.
Way to start twenty twenty five.
We had a servant.
Always saying, pass the.
Thank you so much, thank you, Reverend.
That was great.
Really? Thank you so much. All right, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
All right, omnibus vote agenda.
Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Allen.
Can make a motion to approve the omnibus vote agenda five dash one two five dash five as presented, second.
Remove Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the omnibus vote agenda be passed as presented. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
No.
Motion carried. Uh, looks like we missed something in here, we missed citizens' comments.
I didn't, oh, sorry.
Let's get it in there.
Yep. That was not.
That's quite right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just to do things, Jermaine, I make a motion to add to the agenda, citizens' comments, right after the omnibus vote, uh, vote agenda.
It's remove Alderman January, second by Alderman Coleman, that the citizens' comments be added to the agenda after omnibus vote agenda. Uh, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Deborah Richards.
Good afternoon, evening, evening, evening to all of the council members, the mayor, and I'm here again, and I'm gonna be very, very brief, because I feel I have gotten my answer. Uh, I was listening back to the last council, I think it's in the city, uh, video. And I'd asked why? I have been drug along for this long, September, October, November, December, now it is January. What I heard on the video was something very disturbing to me. And the question was asked, why are they doing Mrs. Richards like this? And I told you months ago, now it's a principle, whether, whatever you do, because you're gonna do what you wanna do. And I have felt the wrath of not falling in line. But I heard this, why hasn't she been given this? And it was said from the mayor, because I choose not to. That was absolutely uncalled for. I was gone, but it was still said. That's a shame. A shame. And I just wanted everyone to know, that troubled me, because I have been led through the wringer on this. And that's all I really have to say, shame on you.
Thank you. Next. Therese Flowers.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, finally up here. I just wanna say thanks to Public Works, are they here?
Yes.
Thanks to Public Works for putting up, there's no signs on Prospect. Clarence made sure they put one literally by my mailbox. I appreciate that. And thanks to Alderman Smith for having these warm meetings that I have attended to and voice my concerns. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year to you. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Um, I hate that Miss Richardson laugh, um, because I want to just tell her, just give it to God. You know, uh, that's what you guys teach us, that's in the book. Ain't no sense of going back and forth, and I'm disappointed that no one thought to correct her, because I didn't hear what she heard, and I think I was at the last couple of meetings. Um, having said that, I wanna piggyback on the twenty twenty fault, because, Ms. January, I've had a whole lot of time to think about a lot of what you did up here. And I'm disgusted that you had the audacity to sit on this council as a leader of the city of North Chicago and stick your finger up at another council member. That was disgusting, and it was embarrassing to the city of North Chicago, as it should have been to the residents that you serve, your constituents. It's inappropriate. Kids watch YouTube. They get an opportunity to see these things. And so then I thought, and I'm like, this woman is up here sticking up her finger, I'm amazed, right? And you got the audacity to be calling for somebody resignation? I wanted to ask you in front of the public, have you reached out to the housing director, to the C, about putting a thing together? Because you is a nurse, right? And I'm so confused by that, because you bring your husband to this meeting like this. And I'm offended, because he's a black man. I go back and look at the meetings, and you allowed your husband to tell you not to go into a closed-door session. If this ain't a personal attack, I'm saying what I seen on YouTube. I am saying what happened in the public. This is not a personal attack. But I didn't hear you say that to her when she attacked the housing director at the last meeting. That was a personal attack. She's a public official, sir. And being that she is a public official, and me being a part of the public, and being a constituent, and a resident of North Chicago, I have every right, because this is my meeting, our meeting. This is where we get to come and have our grates set. What she did was unprofessional. Did you tell her it was unbecoming of an Alderman when she stuck her finger up? But let a resident come up here and do it, you would be one of us to sit down and get out. I'm so sick of all this personal fighting, because anything that almost attacked this man that's sitting in the seat as a mayor is okay. You talking about personal attacks? As an Alderman? The nerve of you have us sitting in this audience while you BS us with this frivolous mess, as you personally attacked the mayor? Can I get thirty more seconds since I was interrupted by your Alderman, ma'am?
Give you thirty seconds.
As I was saying, there's a better way to do things. If you had an issue, what I would rather you do is what adults do. You go have a conversation, dear. But you ain't never been over there to do nothing, and you a nurse. And we have people that's dealing with real addiction. I don't even know if you know what that is, because I don't think it happened too much in your part of the neck of the woods. Come join me, let's go together, and let's go see what we can do, as you've been an Alderman of the city of North Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, sorry.
Charles, January Junior.
Ooh, I get to follow that shit.
Excuse, eh, watch it.
Uh, please. Good evening, North Chicago, City Council, my name is Charles January, ex-mayor, ex-Alderman candidate, North Chicago. Been up here several years, been here a long time. What just happened, that shouldn't happen. My wife didn't put her finger up at nobody, and if she did, I know she apologized. That's a lie, what you just did to my wife, but that's okay, because she could take care of herself. I don't care what you say, it's not her. She was getting, her finger was put up at my wife. I can't see now, but I know what that picture was talking about. Not a picture of my wife, so you need to take that, change that. Secondly, I'll speak about it, Ku Klu Towers, it's a shame. Well, since I was an Alderman, I've been over there, at least forty times. I get called from residents till to this day. I don't have to prove nothing to nobody. That place is not being run right. I don't care who the hell the director is. It's not being run right. You Alderman up here, that building belongs to the city of North Chicago. There's seven Aldermen up here. If the mayor, if it's his director, it's your director also. If one Alderman, or two Aldermen, or five Aldermen, or all seven, if seven say it's time to go, it's time to go. If one called for it, that's kind of peculiar. Two Aldermen called for it, that's something to pay attention to. Three Aldermen called for it, well, four Aldermen called for it, now there's problem. Five Aldermen called for it, Rockingham can't stop them. Six Aldermen called for it, super majority, guess what happens? Motion second, that person's gone. I don't care what the community says, there's rules and regulations. Since two thousand eight, that building has not been certified as a North Chicago Housing Authority. Don't lie to me, I know. So I don't care what a citizen comes up here and has to say and don't have to say. You don't know the rules and regulations? We got more than four people that have died in the last two years, and that Dagum Building, including the ex-chief of police son, has died in that building in North Chicago. I haven't seen anything done yet, and guess what? It ain't gonna be done. But guess what, it's, something's coming, it's soon to come. But I'mma tell you, you can tell me to my face, you can tell me to my behind, you can talk about me like a dog, you could talk to my wife, she been here twelve years. And she got some competition, hopefully, we'll see what happens. But I'mma tell you this, we are not gonna sit down, we are not gonna be quiet. I've heard all the Aldermen say things, there's a lot that I've been told in the community, I'm not talking about it yet, because I have no proof. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Regular agenda?
You hear that reverb? It echoes.
Yeah, I'm trying to fix it, I think it's the mic, that microphone. I think it's this mic.
All right, seven dash one is city bills.
Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Allen.
To pay the city bills, we got a special, both of them together is five hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy cents when funds come available, second.
Remove Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, the city bills plus the special, uh, be passed as presented. Are there questions? Alderman January.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes. I have questions, and I understand Greg will be answering this evening.
I hope I do it as well as the.
Yes, and my condolences go out to Wanda. Um, I feel bad, we'll keep her in our prayers.
I'll let her know that, Alderman.
Thank you. Um, my usual questions, Greg, is, are there sufficient funds in the account to cover this bill run? And where will the checks be cut and sent?
Yes, Alderman, there are, the checks will be cut tomorrow and mailed on Wednesday. The balance of all accounts is twenty-nine million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents.
Thank you. And then what is the liquid amount for the water fund at the close of business day? I believe it was Thursday evening?
Thursday, January second, the water fund balance at the end of the business day was five million, forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. I also have the non-liquid holdings from treasurer.
Oh, go ahead.
The non-liquid holdings are one million, five hundred and eleven thousand, four ninety-seven with eighty-one cents.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
No.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Motion carried, miscellaneous business. Under miscellaneous business, as Alderman January just mentioned, uh, our comptroller, Tawanda Joyner, lost her brother this morning, and we wanna send our condolences out to the Joyner, and also Hawthorne family, uh, on the loss of, you know, of their brother, I think he was forty.
Forty-eight, I believe.
Forty-eight. So I mean, that, you know, as we look, that's a young age, so, uh, again, our, our, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family and our, you know, uh, condolences, and we as a, uh, city will be sending flowers at, during their arrangement, so.
And also, Angie Jenkins, her grandmother passed away Sunday.
Oh, yes.
HR.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, hey, got a call from her, eighteen, okay, thank you. Go get some flowers to her.
Anything else?
Yes, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, pull out your phones, go to your calendars, and put on your calendar, January the eighteenth, it will be the first fifth ward, ward meeting. You know, I've been saying everything next level, this one is gonna be the first ward, second ward, second ward, second ward, third ward, fourth ward, fifth ward, the sixth ward, and the seventh, we're all coming together, starting the year off with a ward meeting on January the eighteenth at twenty-three hundred Martin Luther King, um, in North Chicago, starting at eleven AM, from eleven to three. Um, also, um, Mayor Rockingham, you are always calling people to the front, uh, to make presentations, could you meet me in the front, please?
Okay. Could I put my glove on?
You can hear it.
Can you face my skirt, what you got?
Under your leadership, you have seven wards.
Yes.
But on behalf of your best ward, which is the fifth ward, we want to wish you a happy birthday.
Uh, thank you, sir, thank you. A shirt, oh. Oh, very nice, thank you so much. Being our.
Birthday is probably, no?
Is it?
All right.
Yeah, say how old you was.
Oh, twenty-one.
Twenty-one. I'm sixty-two. Young age of seventy. Thank you so much, Alderman.
You're welcome.
Passing on to her, she'll be very surprised and appreciative of it, so, thank you. All right, is anyone else? Alderman January.
Yes, I just have a question because of the announcement that Alderman Smith made about the different wards coming together. I just wanna make sure, does, because of an open meetings act, if there is more than two Aldermen present, does he need to, uh, apply an agenda and have it posted on the website, or out here on the, yes?
Well, I think Alderman Smith announced the meeting would be at twenty-three hundred Martin Luther King, is that right?
Yes.
So, since a ward meeting is for the conduct of city business, and if you have majority of a quorum present to discuss city business, that would be a meeting. So you should have a announcement and an agenda posted, here and at the location of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanna make sure, um, that it's done proper. Um, and then also, just following up, um, and the nature and the situation going on in our city with all these shootings and deaths that are happening, um, I really would like to know from the police department, the fire department, what's the plans? What are we doing to help these certain communities and buildings within our city to be safe, and making sure that the other residents feel safe? Um, you know, I certainly, at this point, I'm not feeling very safe going around North Chicago. And luckily, I have a position now that I don't have to travel in and out of homes. Um, but I do know there are home health agencies, that their nurses are afraid to come to North Chicago to take care of patients. So, and it's not something funny, it really is not. Nobody should be smirking here, nobody should be snickering, it's serious what's going on here. And I would like to know, you know, what is the plans, what are we doing? Uh, you know, we're gonna be talking about Brookstone later in committee, but let's talk about Ku Klu, what are we doing? I mean, this is getting to be outrageous. And very, very sad to hear of these losses of family members. It's just been weighing so heavily on my, my heart and soul, and I've been praying for everybody in Ku Klu, as well as those families that have lost loved ones. And it's sad that it's, it's a number of people that are part of the city, community-wise, uh, people that have served our city are losing their loved ones out of there. So what are we doing, Mayor? What, you know, Alderman Coleman, what are we doing about Ku Klu? If we could have a, a brief discussion about that, I'd appreciate it, and let's see what, what we're, what's happening.
Well, Alderman, let me just say, first of all, uh, are there still shooting? Sure, yes, they are, but.
They're all throughout the city.
But, but also, you know, actually, our crime rate has gone down here in the city of North Chicago. They, they've gone down over the last, uh, four to five years, some thirty percent they've gone down. And, and a lot of, the things that we have put in place through our police department has, has helped to show that. We have brought in things like ShotSpotter, we have brought in license plate readers, we have got cameras throughout the city of North Chicago to help with our, our, our police department. We've got officers that are out there now, uh, that are aggressively going out to patrol, uh, and, and to help to, uh, bring our, our citizens, to make sure our citizens are safe in North Chicago. I'm sorry that you feel that you feel uncomfortable in the community that you serve as an Alderman. I don't, you know, I mean, if, if, if that is where you feel that, you know, this city is, uh, so unsafe, maybe this is where you need to be at then. Because I feel that North Chicago is, is moving in the right direction in regards to the, the crime rate and, and, uh, how we are patrolling our community. North Chicago, the image of our community has changed over the years. Yes, we used to have some issues, but those issues have gone down dramatically. And, and for you to sit here and say that North Chicago, the way you put it.
I'm not the only one saying it, Mayor.
Well, I, I tell you, I have not heard it throughout the city of North, the residents of North Chicago. Whoever you heard it from, please have them come see me. They can come see me if you have.
And to agencies, home health agencies with nurses.
Have them come see me then.
They're not gonna come see you.
Well, you know, I mean, if you're gonna sit here and down your own city.
I'm not down.
You down in your, you down in the city that you serve.
We just had an overdose the other night in Ku Klu.
Man, I don't need to argue with nobody.
Uh, you know, Alderman, I, I, I hear what you're saying. We have been addressing the issues that are, are, are throughout our community. We have been working with, uh, our North Chicago Housing Authority and Ku Klu and Thompson, and we've been dealing with Brookside, Brookstone. So all of these things that you're sitting here putting out, uh, is just a negative to our community, because it's this time of the year, which is silly season.
Thank you.
So, uh, again, Alderman, if that is, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry that you feel that you're in a, a community that you don't feel safe in. But I, I could walk down any street in, in the city of North Chicago that I feel safe at, so. Moving forward, anyone else?
I would like to speak. First of all, you got to be able to walk down the city streets to know whether it's safe. See, so many people, like I said before, they gonna try to grandstand up here. They don't even go to the neighborhoods they talking about, they go to and visit, because if that's the case, they'll be running into me, because I'm all over the city. All over, from T Street back to Abbott, okay? I'm all over the city. I don't even, all I do is hear people come up here, grandstand, I told people back when I went to that class in November, I said, what's gonna happen when it's time for people to get elected? They gonna come up here, they gonna act like people, why in the world would you call somebody that don't even know they sitting up in a council meeting right now? They don't even know how to get to a council meeting, but they talking about, I'm getting phone calls, what the hell they gonna call them for? They is not gonna call nobody, they can't even make it from one step to another, okay? I know exactly, but come on up here then, Father. Okay? Now, the next thing is, come on up here then, Father.
Alderman, no, we're not gonna bring, we're not bringing people up.
Then the next thing I'm gonna say is, stop critic, if you don't like the city, don't sit up here, don't ask for nobody to vote for you. You don't like the city, if the city is that bad for you, don't be in the city of North Chicago. There's somebody else to replace somebody, trust and believe. They tired of folks, they tired of everybody criticizing folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
It happened the other.
Then you wanna, then you wanna stick your middle finger up to folks, you think that, but you concerned about the residents. How concerned are you? Are you really concerned about? Talk about the record, partner, you go to the medical doctor, Ferg, where you talking about anything.
Let, 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 let's, let's not start having a conversation. Finish, finish your remarks, Alderman.
No, I'm done, I'm done, cause I, listen, I respect everybody in this council, but some things, some things, you just, you will let people tie you in the stuff. And I think I just let loose for a moment. So I really apologize to you, and I, I shouldn't have said that, but I ain't gonna, I'm not gonna get that low. I'm not that low, so I'm sorry to the Januaries.
Alderman Jackson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, basically, two things I, I want to ask. And the first one is, do we really have a plan and what are we really doing at Kukla Towers and Thompson Manor? I had a resident call me and had a very extensive, long conversation yesterday about the, the goings-on in the two buildings. And they feel that enough is not being done and they're even calling for outside um involvement if our police department can't handle the situation. And that concerns me. And I would like to at least know what we are doing to try and mitigate and or eradicate the people who are in those buildings selling dope, prostitution, and anything that is illegal and illicit. And that definitely concerns me because not just back and forth and not just politics, but we are talking about public safety issues. And this has been something that's been going on, and, and I know we keep hearing about, well, we're doing this, we're doing this. But what are we really doing? Are we under manned that we may need to go outside for other agencies? Be federal or state to assist us to get these people out of the building that are doing illegal acts? And basically terrorizing the people who are in Kukla Towers and Thompson Manor? Because I'm getting calls from people that are scared. They love where they're at, but they're scared. So we gotta do something. So, you know.
Let's not get into that right now.
So that's one.
If, if you're gonna speak, let's get it in committee. It should be in committee like you are, are aware. We can put it in committee and speak about it.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
If, if necessarily, we can bring not only the board member, but the director in.
Right.
And speak, okay?
That's one. And then my final thing is, is, is again, I keep hearing that the housing authority is under the auspices of the city of North Chicago, or the buildings of city of North Chicago. Is that true first and foremost, or are they under the authority of HUD? Or are we part of HUD? Can someone answer that?
The housing authority was incorporated by the city. But once it's incorporated, it is a municipal corporation and a separate body politic. The city has authority to appoint members to its board, but the housing authority is a separate corporation and it has statutory authority.
And that's, and that's the thing that doesn't, is it, is it ran by, do we know of a HUD? Even though it don't, it has its own statutory authority, uh, is it a HUD facility? Does HUD have anything to do with it? Does HUD put any money into these properties?
I, I don't know, I don't know whether or not HUD puts money into the properties or not.
No, you cannot.
So, but that's something that, that's also, I mean, here's the way I look at it. If we're going to HUD when Brookstone is doing stuff, whether it's Lake County Housing Authority or whomever, if they're cutting up over there at Brookstone, why can't we do the same thing with Kukla Towers and Thompson Manor? If they're under the auspices or affiliated with HUD? If we're good for doing it for Brookstone, then we should be good to do it for these other two properties that we're having problems with. And that's all I have on this matter for now. If we're gonna move it to committee to be discussed, but I, I feel that we really have to do something. We gotta step up our game. Or we obviously have to do, we, we do. I mean, it, this is, this is getting crazy. I mean, like I say, we're talking life safety issues. We're talking public safety issues. And like, if I was living there, I would, would demand more than what we're doing also. And like I said, after the calls and texts and things that I'm getting, um, I, I believe that we, we're, we're, we're kind of selling the people short that are the residents and tenants of those buildings. If we could do something, or if we can meet with the board and or staff to see what we can do better. Because the way it looks now, it's, things aren't happening the way they should happen. And, and that's, and that's unfortunate. Because our homes is supposed to be our sanctuary. And it can't be a sanctuary when you got disaccord and disruption, illegal activities and things of that nature, so.
Thank you, Alderman. Let me just say, just like, uh, if, if you wish to put into the budget additional dollars for more police officers, that could be discussed also. Just like Brookstone, uh, yes, if, if you wishing to put additional dollars into the budget so we can hire more officers to uh police those areas, just remember, those dollars have to come from somewhere. And, and it's the residents of North Chicago from their property taxes as we increase those, those uh, uh, security. Uh, so, I mean, there, there's things that needs to be put in place. But as you should know, that, you know, a lot of it doesn't strictly come through North Chicago. It is the agencies that are running them that, that those dollars should be coming from, not just us. Now, we will help patrol. I, I, I'll, I'll say that one hundred percent. And I will say also, things are going on at Kukla Towers that, uh, you know, we are, are looking into issues that are going on. A lot of times, as you as an uh, uh, a, uh, authority from the police, know that sometimes we cannot always express and tell what's all being happening behind the scenes. But I will say that there are things that are, are, are going on that we are starting to address uh there at Kukla Towers. And we're trying to get more manpower out into that on the weekends. I mean, that is something that, uh, we're, we're, we have no problem uh letting the residents of Kukla and Thompson are aware. Weekends, we try to get more patrols to walk through the, the, the property. But again, if you want us to have security there twenty-four seven from the city of North Chicago, we have to put those dollars into it. And, and if that's something this council wants to do, then we have to address it and know where those dollars are coming from in order to pay for, you know, that type of security at Brookstone, Kukla Towers, and Thompson Manor. Uh, I'm gonna go to others first and then
That's fine.
Uh, Alderman Murphy?
Um, on the North Chicago Housing Authority website, if it's up to date and correct, um, there's a section on housing choice vouchers, you know, cause a person has to apply. Um, housing choice vouchers are administered locally by public housing agencies, called PHAs. The PHAs receive federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to administer the voucher program. So there is some connection, and it sounds like there is some funding that happens as a result of this housing authority or any housing authority working on the voucher system. That, that's just what I was able to glean right here. I'm not saying I'm an expert. So there is some connection. And I would think if there's some connection federally, then there might also be some assistance in how it's governed.
Exactly. Thank you. I think Alderman Smith, you have one, then I'll go back to two things. One?
Two things. One, who's gonna handle getting the information to the director slash the board that we're inviting them to come for the next meeting?
We'll have our chief of staff and, and our police department.
All right. And for the record, Chief, could you come up for a second, please?
And just as another voice, on behalf of what the mayor has said, cause it's my understanding too about our crime has gone down, staying the same or gone up?
Our crime has gone down at least twenty percent a year over the last four years. I think this year, we're in the thirty percent down from last year. And each month, you guys get the amount of shootings and shots fired that we have. Uh, and I believe you see those going down each year or each month.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. Um, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Coleman.
Okay, um, the, the crime rates went down as far as shootings and murders. Is that including the Brookstones uh statistics? Or is that just North Chicago?
That's including North Chicago as a whole. Uh, actually, I think we had one shots fired since our last meeting at, uh, with Brookstone, at Brookstone. And, uh, a juvenile was taken into custody and there's a warrant for, for an adult as well.
Okay.
We are making a lot of arrests.
I've been living here all my life and, um, at one time, it was a murder every month at Brookstone. We were praying for him. And, um, I don't know how that equates to the numbers going down. Now, I do understand that throughout the city, crime does appear to be getting better. But are we recording those statuses at Brookstone?
Yes, sir. We, we give them to you every month.
Oh, okay. All right.
Not just particular at Brookstone, but overall, but if you have any questions about Brookstone, we're happy to share those with you.
We've had more murders without Brookstone than with Brookstone? Twenty percent?
That is not what I said. I said, we don't keep them specifically for Brookstone. We keep, we keep them citywide. But if you want it, if you want to see that narrower as far as what Brookstone's going, is doing, uh, we can share those with you. Nothing to do with murders.
Okay, so we're talking about crime, not murder?
Right.
Got you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else for Alderman January?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one of the things that, um, as you were talking about bringing on more police and security and, and that, um,
No, you guys were talking about it. They
I wasn't, but
Well, Alderman Jackson talked about bringing in more security.
Trying to give a, a solution. So
Okay.
Thanks for the interruption.
No problem, but I just, just make sure you address it to the right person that asked the question.
But no, you just said about bringing more police and stuff like that.
It was addressed to me that, that's what
But you made a statement, so I'm not gonna argue with you.
Well, I'm just making sure.
Please, let's not argue.
I'm not arguing. Do I have to make an argument? I'm just saying
You didn't have to interrupt me. You could've waited to hear my solution.
That's all.
You could've waited to hear my solution.
Just direct it to the right person and we move on.
Oh, my Lord.
Okay.
You are something else. Um, anyways, my part of my, part of my solution
I'm, I'm what?
Nothing, Mayor. You're interrupting me again, and I'm trying to provide
Point of order back to the agenda item.
You're, you're not leading this meeting. Go ahead.
Uh, hold on, whoa, 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 Mr. Mayor, you know, me and you don't do that. We, we not, we're not We're not gonna do that. Can we get back to the agenda items?
Speak.
Thank you.
No, that's okay. I reserve it. Thank you. Since you don't want to hear it. Thank you. Obviously, some people up here don't. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
As far as what's going on with Kukla Towers and Thompson, mostly Kukla Towers, cause that's where I get a lot of the phone calls, my husband and I. And we're on the phone together with these people. Um, one of the things that I want to make sure that is happening, cause in the long run, it can help us, is making sure that we are taking down information correctly and keeping proper stats. Because with those statistics, we are able to actually go after some funding to help with what we were talking about and the mayor brought up, that there was a suggestion of adding more police enforcement, private security, whatever we need to do. There is funding out there, but we have to keep the stats. And we need to show the proper stats in order to get this funding. So, and it comes from the federal government, and it would be helpful. So something maybe, uh, Chief, you can look into to see about some of these grants?
We, we currently do have a, a cops grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
About that one. I'm talking about for the opiate crisis.
We, we're trying to revive our old opiate grant right now.
Okay. So that will help with these situations. I'm, I'm just trying to offer some
Honestly, what, 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 uh, uh, Kukla Tower needs, in my opinion, uh, is probably a twenty-four hour security watch there. We cannot do that. We're doing extra patrols. We're conducting, we're conducting drug investigations. We have conducted several searches there. Uh, but the issue you have there is that you have people that are selling inside the building.
Yes.
As well as, it is a gated building, and people are buzzing in the drug dealers to come in. So I don't have to go out in the parking lot. Junebug is gonna, thanks for the name, for the use of the name. Junebug is gonna let me
Be careful using that name.
Bring, bring
Just letting you know.
Bring the drug dealer right to my house. So at some point in time, some honest has to be put on those residents that are allowing those folks to endanger the community that they live in.
I understand it, but I'm just telling, I was just trying to give a solution
No, I
To kind of help monetarily, help with the situation of maybe some more policing. I'm just was giving that recommendation.
We always look at grants, Alderman.
So, could the chief of the fire department come up, please? I just have one question for you. And I don't know if you'll know this on top of your head, but, um, you can certainly email out of us if, if not. Um, and one of the things is, do you know in the past month, so let's say just December, how many times have you and your department have to go to Kukla Towers to, um, for overdosing? Specifically overdosing?
I believe the recent one that we went was, was once, that last overdose that took place, and I think people knew that.
That was just recent.
So I don't know
I'm talking in December.
I can, I don't know that that's an overdose as of yet. There's
They know when they, they know if it's an overdose or not.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do.
Not the toxicology is bad.
No, they know, cause they have to administer Narcon. I, I know this. So please, if you don't know the number for December, just
I can give you
Email it to us.
I did pull the numbers from our ESO reporting software that we use downstairs. Everything's tracked and we have all the statistics for the year of twenty twenty-four. At fourteen forty Jackson, we had one confirmed overdose uh, death and three deaths with a possible overdose. Which were unconfirmed.
Seems very low.
These are all the ones that were
Compared to calls that I have received. So somebody is not being accurate. Yeah, so. Um, and I'm not saying that you aren't. I'm just saying somebody is like
We, we are getting
Mayor, I'm still speaking. Thank you.
I can continue. Those are the records we, we are having in our department. And, and each call goes out to our, our fire department, our EMS, and they are the ones that transport. So their records are being kept. So wherever else you get your records from, please make sure that they're getting the right, right
That's why I asked for him to come out and answer.
And he just told you what they were.
And I'm just telling and making a statement that I'm not getting the truth somewhere. So I will get down to the bottom of it.
Thank you.
And
Please do.
As I will also be following up with HUD. Um, the last question I have, how would you handle, um, cause I know we have three ambulances, correct?
Yes.
We're not able to man all three, correct? Or are we at a point where we can now?
Two, we can, we do two and we keep an engine in service.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
And the engine is ALS. It's, it has the capabilities of a, and unless we wait for another transport from somewhere else.
Okay. So if there was, let's say, an overdose happening in Kukla Towers, you would still be able to handle a heart attack somewhere else in the city?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were good manpower wise and being able to handle any situation that may come up.
Yes.
During a a call that's ha- you know, happening with the overdose, because it does take time.
We do.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for your information. Thank you, Mayor, I'm done.
Alderman Coleman.
Well, Happy New Year to everybody, um. This year, uh Mr. Mayor, I'd like to extend my respect out to the uh mayor's chair. And hopefully this year will um go in a direction in which we are uh working together to make this city, to this beautiful city, right? So, leave twenty-four and twenty-four and I'm gonna go ahead and move into twenty-five, okay? So, with that being said, um, I hear a lot about Kukla Towers. Uh, I'll take responsibility for that. If if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, uh there's not an excuse, but I allow myself to be distracted, um, the real reason why uh I wanted this team. And with that being said, I think a solution to Kukla Towers is allow me an opportunity to sit down with the the director. Hold some board meetings, speak to some of the commissioners and come up with a strategy and bring it back to the council, and I know at that time that I know my council will support me. Because we might not agree on everything, but we agree on making our city better. Like Brookstone, Kukla, Thompson. So, um with that being said, uh council, if you allow me an opportunity to start the new year off in Kukla and kind of uh right my ship here. I would appreciate it, thank you. Right my ship. I would appreciate it, I'll get back to the council with some solutions um at the next council meeting. That's it.
Okay, anyone else under miscellaneous? Uh, one more thing I had, uh I received this uh letter on my desk and it says, Mayor Rockingham, if possible, please read at city council meeting, thank you. And it reads, Dear Mayor Rockingham, thank you for shop with uh the cop. Chief Perez and policeman Gabe are the best cops. I want to be a police lady cop. When I uh get a job, I want to take them uh shopping with McKinsey. It was the best time and the greatest Christmas for me. Love McKinsey Johnson, eight-year-old, learned school. Chief Perez, top cop, so this goes out to. And and I could, and I could tell this was your handwriting, but that's. But uh good job, so I did want to let them know that I was gonna read this uh uh at council. So yes, shop with a cop uh was it had uh, we had a great time out there. And and I know a lot of the kids, though they didn't send the letter out, but they all enjoyed themselves, so they had a great time.
That's it.
Alright, alright, with that, uh again, we. Somebody? No, I I was gonna just say, uh twenty twenty-five, I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Uh, I feel that uh North Chicago is moving forward and I think twenty twenty-five is gonna be a good year for each and every one of us here, all the residents of North Chicago, our guests that come in. Uh, we are gonna move North Chicago forward in twenty twenty-five.
Mayor, could you just give the residents, because I missed the the uh groundbreaking ribbon cutting? Uh, just give the citizens a little update on the compass, I'm excited about that.
Compass, yes, yes, we did do a ribbon cutting probably about uh three weeks ago now. Uh, we were out, uh compass, uh their staff and their management came out, uh little chilly out. But uh, you know, they had a little, they had a tent, they tried to have a heater, but it was a little chilly out.
Even with the heater on the tent.
But uh, we we had a good ev- good event, I know there are waiting for a few more permits uh to be finalized, uh they're looking forward to breaking ground as soon as possible. Uh, hopefully, uh, you know, within the next few months here, they're gonna have, finish up their permits and uh we're gonna see some earth being moved out there, so.
Just enlighten them on what compass is.
Oh, compass, yes. Uh, it is a, actually, it's a truck stop, it is a full-service truck stop. Uh, they are gonna be having uh not only the truck stop, but a restaurant uh in there. Uh, it is uh, you know, uh, when I say truck stop, and again, I and I've said this on many occasions. People say, why, you know, bring a truck stop into North Chicago? We get motor fuel tax dollars for each gallon that that truck pulls up to that pump. And when he pumps in, you know, two, three hundred gallons of gas into that, into that semi. Those are dollars that are coming, we we get a certain percent of that coming back into North Chicago. So, you know, uh compass is a a uh facility that's got, what, eighteen or so different uh compasses throughout the country?
Actually, only one other uh fueling center, it's in uh Dematte, Indiana, I sixty-five.
Okay, and uh.
They're a multifaceted corporation, they're, they even have an arena on the southwest side of Chicago in Bolingbrook.
So, oh, it's gonna be on Route forty-one, right next to uh don't pass that by uh where Dunkin' Donuts is at, to that field to the south, between that field and uh U-line. So that field right there, that's where compasses be coming in, so. And uh, they're excited, they're excited to be in the city of North Chicago, so.
Just to confirm the status, they're impermitting right now, there's a few plaits that they need to bring forward to city council here in the coming months. And they've also indicated that they like to pursue a sign variation for the development as well. Uh, but yeah, again, their hope is to start construction here in this new year and uh we look forward to bringing that into town.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else, anything else? Alright, entertain a motion to adjourn, so moved. Remove Alderman Smith, second Alderman Allen, that the city council stand adjourned, any questions, all in favor?
All right.
Oppose, motion carried. Right.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we call the Judiciary Committee meeting to order, roll call please. Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
At this time, we have one uh item on the agenda, is the discussion and review of Brookstone at Coles Park. Um, I believe Chief of Staff Jackson will be presenting at this time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, members of the committee. Uh, just a brief update on Brookstone, we've uh reached out to our legal counsel to get an update on the uh surety bond situation, waiting to hear back from council on that. The uh formal public safety plan is beginning with implementation, they're starting with their first meeting, I believe on January twenty-first. Where it's the community uh law enforcement, as well as Brookstone management, and actually senior Brookstone management. They are beginning to uh search out security firms to provide the boots-on-the-ground security that's been required of that uh public safety plan. We'll be providing an update to the adjudication officer, the hearing officer in February. Uh, once again, to reiterate uh the bite behind what's being required for Brookstone. Uh, if they fail to meet the milestones that have been laid out and we, I think it's uh important for us to get the council, some council members have it, I I'm not sure everybody does, the plan that was written out, that was approved by the administrative hearing officer as far as what's needed.
Yeah.
And then the uh uh milestones, but the milestones, they've uh been assessed a fine of five hundred dollars a day. Since the hearing held in abeyance, uh which means it uh, as long as they carry out and meet the milestones that they're supposed to, uh they will not be subject to the fine, but should they fail to meet those milestones, then the fine is uh levied against them. So, uh we continue to move forward with the public safety plan that's uh been approved by the administrative officer. The hearing officer just signed off on it and we just released it back to uh uh the clerk for filing, uh so it was in our files.
Is there any question for any councilman? Hearing none, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Coleman.
Um, just as a whole, as a council, just a question, do you think uh that the Kukler should be put on the agenda item like Brookstone? Uh, and we discuss it and get updates from Greg? Or do you think this is something that we can all hold off on for another two weeks?
Well, you you asked to hold off basically, so let you do your research, so there's no need. I don't feel there's a need to put it on to discuss until you're ready to tell us what your updates and what your findings are.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else, anyone else? Hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn the Judiciary Committee meeting at this time.
Second.
Who first? Was it? Oh, okay. Alright, the move by Alderman Allen, seconded by Alderman Coleman to adjourn the Judiciary Committee meeting. Um, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Sam.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
You, aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
I'd like to open up the Public Works Committee meeting, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
We have one item, discussion review for the lead service line replacement project, Steve Engineer.
Good evening to everyone, um in front of you, you have a council agenda request and a work order for uh design engineering and bidding services for the phase one of the lead service line replacement uh project. Um, this project, uh, let me go back a little bit. Couple years ago, the city was uh mandated by the US EPA and the Illinois EPA to turn around and identify all the lead service lines throughout the city. Uh, this past August, uh the city uh completed their inventory of all the different buildings and identified uh that the city had approximately nine hundred lead and also galvanized steel uh service lines throughout the city. Uh, there's currently funding available, it's uh uh for cities like North Chicago. Uh, which are low-income communities where we are eligible to receive up to three million dollars per year to replace these lead service lines. Um, and through that program, we have uh applied for and completed previously uh project planning report, which identifies that and says, hey, the city of North Chicago, because it's about eighteen million dollars just to replace lead service lines and the galvanized ones from the main to the water meter. That's it, no other work, just the lead service lines, there's no money in there for water main replacement work. Um, it's that that's literally just, we're gonna be digging up and putting in a new service line from the main to the the meter in in somebody's basement, or if the meter's outside in there uh in a pit. So that, so it's about eighteen million dollars that we've estimated that it's gonna take to replace all the lead service lines and the galvanized steel lines. This is the first phase, you're eligible, the project is, is that you're eligible up to three million dollars, a hundred percent principal forgiveness through the I E P A. So what we're doing is, we're gonna say, okay, we'll complete all the work in over a six-year period. So that way, the work is completed at zero cost to the city. So this is the first phase of the project.
Any questions? Adam.
The city has some water main replacement scheduled probably for twenty twenty-five? Yes. Does it have, is any of the scope of work for phase one included in the same area where the water main is gonna be replaced? You can do the lead service line replacement at the same time you're doing the water main work?
Uh, that'll be handled separately. The I P A changed the rules a couple years ago, so let's say, uh, and prime example is that Sixteenth Street project that we just completed. The I P A requires now required in uh in order to uh receive any funding or actually to do any water main replacement uh projects, you have to replace all the lead service lines within that project limits, all the way up to the meter, from the from the main, all the way up to the meter. So, uh, we have received some funding uh previously from Senator Durbin, about a half a million dollars. We're also uh supposed to, scheduled to receive, I think it's either one or one point five million, if the congressional budget ever gets passed. From uh, that was graciously given to us by Congressman Schneider's office. That project is to replace water main and lead service lines on uh Broadway. And also on a couple blocks of Victoria, that project's already designed and sitting there, we're just waiting for the releasing of the funds from um Congress Congressman Schneider's office when the budget gets passed.
Uh, I got a question and and maybe you can answer it, if not, I can understand that. And because you said that we're waiting on grant funding to come in. Do we have any potential um risk or concerns that when the administration change on January twentieth, that that could be lost or changed or rescinded? Or is that guaranteed, we're gonna get the money that has been promised us?
The half a million dollars you are guaranteed to receive, the uh future one million or one point five million may not happen.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, because I could say anything can happen and if we at least got some money locked in for this year, that will help us out in in the project that's, you know, being forecasted. Thank you.
Alderman Coleman.
Um, just for point of clarification, um, we're putting a one point five million up first and then we're getting, why is it on the agenda, what are we voting on? I understand it's a project.
It it's for uh design engineering services, for the first phase of a three million dollar six-phase project to replace the lead service lines.
I got that point, and then it's gonna go on to get voted on at the next council meeting? Or we're just in discussion, getting general consensus now?
The goal is to have it on the next meeting agenda for approval.
For approval, and that approval, will that have a dollar amount attached to that approval, or that's just approval? Okay, and what is that, a dollar amount that will be attached at the next council meeting that we have to vote on?
In the council agenda request, and as I submitted the agenda uh title, it was supposed to be review, uh supposed to read, review and approve Trotter and Associates Inc. Work order and the mountain act to exceed amount of two hundred and four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars for lead service line replacement project. Design, engineering and bidding services, phase one.
And that's what we're um, that's what we're voting on at the next meeting and that's what will be covered by the grant? Or that's just our portion that we're putting out, then the grant's gonna?
The grant is gonna cover a hundred percent of both design engineering, construction engineering and construction costs.
So, what is the two hundred, what are we voting on again then? At the next, at the next.
Design engineering services to turn around, so. How the grant works, the grants through the I E P A, it's it's a reimbursement. Uh, the I P A long process, so for like Sixteenth Street, that was just completed. The city up-fronts the money, okay, and then you get reimbursed as we go through the project. We submit monthly or bi-monthly reimbursement requests to the I P A. Then the E I P A cuts a check and it comes over, or they don't mail a check, I believe they transfer electronically to 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 the controller's office, to Wanda. So that's how the process works. You're gonna upfront the money for this project as we go along, and then you're gonna be getting reimbursed. And at the end of the, end of the project, because you're gonna enter into the loan agreement, that's one of the next steps before we go go out and before it can be awarded to a contractor, is that you're gonna enter into the loan agreement that says, hey, anything over like three point two million dollars or whatever, three point one million dollars, whatever the dollar amount that the I P A is setting. Uh, and I won't know that until sometime in March. and I won't know that until sometime in March, um, you will turn, be turning around and saying, hey, anything above that is gonna be the city cost, and anything below that dollar amount is gonna be a hundred percent principal forgiveness for the loan.
So um, my my final here, I don't know about final, but make, if this question is answered properly, um, the two, the, what we're voting for at the next agenda is an upfront cost in which the grants will put out payments to cover and reinstate this money and reimburse us, correct?
Correct.
So I'm on the same page. And to piggyback off of Alderman Jackson, my question is, uh, the same as Mr. Jackson is, is there anything that can go wrong with the next administration where the two hundred thousand that we're voting on at the next council member, uh, at the next council meeting is not reimbursed because of the current administration? Should we wait and make sure we get our money? Or should we gamble and pay it upfront, and then there's a possibility that we don't get reimbursed like we have done in the past in our city before? So I want to make sure we get our money back.
This program is administered through the Illinois EPA, and it is, and it is funded. It's not, it's not dependent upon what happens in Washington. What was previously discussed with Alderman Jackson was funding that we received at the federal level, and that relates to the federal fiscal budget, two different pots of money.
Okay, um, Alderman, uh, I would love to take this offline. Um, I've made a few, uh, I've reached out to the chief of staff on a few occasions. Um, he doesn't answer my phone calls, so uh if if, yeah, that is true, I've called you a few times.
That's first, that's your thing, as of right now.
No, here.
As of right now, hold on, Coleman, as of right now. We're not talking about the chief of staff, you're going to talk about something, talk about what the agenda that he's talking about.
Well, I would like to.
Do you think I didn't do it to chief of staff?
You're right. Can I address the chief of staff on this agenda item?
No, you want to address this, address this, or or it's over. Address the chief of staff afterwards.
Mr. Alderman, sir.
Nope, nope, nope.
Or now.
Alderman Murphy, right here. Okay, anyone else got a question?
Just want to clarify, this is not, the the lead service line project is not a discretionary project. The state and federal governments have required lead service lines from the water main to the meter to be replaced universally over a long period of time. You all recall what happened in Flint, Michigan with lead service line? That triggered a bunch of requirements on a state and local level, so the IEP fortunately has these loan programs where you have principal forgiveness that helps pay for that, but the overall performance of the project is mandated by state and federal government.
And that's the part that's guaranteed by the.
The requirement that the work gets done is 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 mandated by the government. The money that's being offered is a state program funded by state money. This particular grant that Steve's talking about, in this case.
So basically, you're guarantee, we're guaranteed to get our money back through IEP, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Put on the. You got a work on your chair, man, sure.
Gonna, before I close, before I close this out, I'm gonna suggest that everybody read their packets before they come up here. Because a lot of this stuff that we be asked, that some people ask questions about, is in the packet, as I said before. A lot of people come up here, they ask these questions, and all they gotta do is read, because it's right here in the packet. And they sit here and they ask these people as they come up, the same questions with the.
Motion to dismiss and go home?
But the answer's right in the packet.
Motion to close.
People, believe me, when I say that from now to April, grand standing.
Motion to close.
And I'm sick of it, and it's gonna be told, I don't care who it is, I'm not gonna bite my tongue. Now I'm gonna close the.
Stack it. Oh, motion.
Motion by Coleman and second by Alderman Allen. Thank you.